Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I would like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of October 1st, 2025. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit our site at everettwa.gov/citycouncil. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin.
Excused.
Councilmember Bader.
Excused.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Vogely.
Excused.
Councilmember Fosse.
Here.
Councilmember Tui.
Here.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Here.
President Schwab.
Here. And at this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Tui to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And I'd like to ask Councilmember Zarlingo to read the land acknowledgement.
Badly. This council acknowledges the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahobes people, and their successors, the Talalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Now it's on to old business. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for September 24th, 2025?
Councilmember Ryan, so moves.
Seconded.
Motion and seconds been made. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. All right, now it's time for a public comment, which involves written comment acknowledgement under our rules. Written comments shall be considered in the same manner as oral comments. Persons submitting comments must provide their name and city of residence to make our official council record. Good evening, Angie. Do we have any written comments or public comments?
Good evening, President Schwab. We have no written comments or public comments.
Okay. Is there someone here in the chambers that would like to sign up to speak? Okay. All right, we'll move on to council comments, starting with Councilmember Ryan.
Thanks. Yeah, it's lonely over here. Good evening, everybody. This week is Week Without Driving. It's a week that's put on every year by Disability Rights Washington and I believe some other organizations across the United States. And the purpose of the week is to ask participants to go a whole week without driving their own vehicle. And it's intended to bring awareness to how our built environment works and in most cases doesn't work for people who can't or don't drive. So it's been a great experience. I've done it for the last four years. I'm proud to say that today I rode Everett Transit and they were one minute late, which was actually pretty phenomenal considering it was towards the end of the route. So kudos to Everett Transit for their great work to keeping our buses on time. I've also, you know, enjoy my walkability score of 92 from my house, which I see as an absolute privilege. And I just also wanted to share a shout out to our city staff for the work that they do to address mobility for people of all ability levels across the city and also our work on the Vision Zero Plan so that people who walk or roll or scooter across town can do so in a safe way. So that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fosse.
Thanks. It's been a busy week, but I think the only thing that I think I'll mention is this morning there was a groundbreaking ceremony for Scribness Place. And I don't know if folks remember the Norton Playfield development that was prior to my involvement with council that was brought forward about housing our youth and families that may be unsheltered or not having a stable place to live. And well, now the development is in Linwood and the school district down there has been working with them. And it was a really well-planned, beautiful groundbreaking with tons of folks and stakeholders and a really, really beautiful public-private partnership and all of these units that these families in still in Snoke County will be able to be at and be in a stable place to get their education. And still think it's kind of unfortunate that Everett didn't get to have that. But that's the only sentiments for today.
Thank you. Councilmember Tui.
Yeah, we had the Community Health and Safety Council Committee meeting prior to this evening meeting. We had two reports. One was the Community Alternative Response Everett or the Care Team. They gave a great briefing about all the growth of the program since it started and where they're at today and how they're working so closely with our police and our fire and our library and really addressing a lot of needs and really getting out there. So and encouraged that we have funding through next year. So that all some really good news there. And then we had the Police UAV Program Update, which is the drone program. And we are now going to have six different drones to cover the city of Everett. And they should be up and running by the end of November. So we'll look forward to more of that information when it comes. So both of those were very informative and great presentations. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Zarlingo.
Well, several things. One of the most recent where you, Council President Schwab, and Councilmember Ryan were at was the Budget Open House that the city held at Everett Station in the warehouse room on Monday. We're really trying to do the best job we can with limited funds and expanding responsibilities and to look ahead beyond this year's budget, the budget we're working on right now. The open house on Monday had an emphasis on understanding the priorities of our community, engaging them on the complex and sometimes painful choices we'll all be making. There were some really good discussions, both during and after the main session. I want to thank our Finance Director Heidi and Assistant Finance Director Jamie Lee for presentation there and answering some questions. And to also reiterate that we're still very much in the mode of gathering community input and priorities on this. So and if you, you can send that to any of your city contacts. You can go to the city of Everett's website and click on Budget. You can always send things to DLIF and council@everettwa.gov. So we look forward to hearing more about that kind of stuff because these kind of choices really demand we understand the priorities and the interests of our community as much as possible. I attended a couple of committees that are county or regional coordination. The Snoke County Tomorrow Steering Committee. We're, this is a group that discusses and cooperates on countywide issues. And we got updates on discussion on community transit, the Department of Emergency Management, specifically hazard mitigation, economic development, and tourism, I think one more. One remarkable thing from community transit, which serves the county. Everett Transit serves primarily the city and community transit serves gets people around the county and to and from Everett. One thing that their director said is that they're getting much higher ridership on weekends, nearly as much as on weekdays, and they're not quite sure why. So that's an interesting thing. I guess we'll all be watching for that and seeing what the significance might be. And it could be a part of a more gradual shift toward transit as the roads get crowded and as the transit gets better. So hopefully that's the kind of thing we'll see more of. It's the kind of thing we need to see more of as we get higher population and higher density. I was also on the Puget Sound Regional Council's Board Representation Committee. That's, PSRC is a regional organization of four counties that implements the, are part of the implementation of the Growth Management Act. It's a way to coordinate the counties to handle expected growth and especially to share the load and the impacts. That's what happens if you get high growth and you don't have teeth in a growth management law is the counties sort of and the communities fight with each other. And so this is a way to resolve that in a more productive and better coordinated way. This group just recently certified Everett's recent comprehensive plan update along with a number of others. That's one of the ways it implements that role. And the temporary committee I'm serving on that met last week, we're working on specific reexamination of the representation on the executive board and the other boards as part of the Puget Sound Regional Council. We're working to consider changes in representation that will best reflect the needs and the challenges of the communities as they evolve. And then one last thing. Councilmember Vogely and I went to a meeting, a community meeting on manufactured housing, zoning or zoning overlays. We were there with State Senator June Robinson and also briefing by Everett's Long Range Planning Manager, Allison Wetzel. Lots of questions and suggestions with the community. We're looking for a way to support the housing density that Everett and the region needs in the future and to preserve the limited amount of existing housing that's somewhat affordable in the manufactured housing communities, helping us handle the needs of seniors, veterans, disabled, and those on low or fixed income. So I think we've got some ways to do that and maybe enhance the functionality and perhaps the density of some of those manufactured housing communities. So that work is ongoing. There'll be work by staff and then recommendations to the, or briefing to the Planning Commission, recommendations from that Planning Commission to this council for action in the next few months. Is that for me?
Thank you. Yes, I want to, I want to thank the staff for the Budget Open House meeting that was, that we had on Monday and appreciate all, all the residents and neighbors that showed up. I had a couple of comments about some of the feedback. One was there were a lot of questions about the presentation and the details. Of course, it wasn't enough time to go over all the details. We're looking at, that was a meeting really, we're looking at emphasizing the priorities and basically the scope and where the percentages that we should put our resources in. And there will be some follow-up meetings. I think we're going to put out a schedule to have at least one, two, maybe three open houses here next year. Also, if you're watching this live or taped, I would encourage you to surf through our city website because we have multiple meetings on the budget. I think last year we had 12 meetings in a row over the budget. So I would really encourage, if you're really interested in some of the details, they are provided. Also, I want to congratulate the Boulevard Bluff neighborhood for officially forming. And also, one other comment, I should have brought this up earlier. One other comment that, and it's something that I think this, this group has been talking a lot about. And that is how the city of Everett manages their finances compared to other cities. And I would say, any comparison, we do a fantastic job. And that was one thing that also came up. And Heidi had brought that up earlier too. That was some of the feedback she heard. So it's always good to be on top as far as responsible budgeting management. And, you know, the city, I think, has a long history spanning back multiple years. And thanks for, Councilmember Tui, for being a big part of this group and that. We have a long history of being very good managers of the resources that our residents provide for us. So any kind of comparisons out there show that we do a fantastic job. So I really appreciate that. So moving on to our administration, Jennifer Gregerson.
Yes. One item, I know that council has received some questions from residents and others recently about the State Department of Commerce grant that we received for the Outdoor Events Center. Like a handful of other baseball stadiums around the state, Everett was fortunate to receive funds for a new stadium and it's in that, in this current biennium. Some folks have wondered about the specific state budget account where the grant is funded. The youth athletic facilities account is administered by the state and the allocations are approved by the state legislature. If for some wild reason the city did not accept the grant, those funds would just go back into the state capital budget. They wouldn't necessarily be awarded to a local project. It'd probably be awarded in a future year to a project in another community around the state somewhere. The only way to guarantee they're spent on a field that serves Everett residents would be to use this grant award on our project. And our staff are busy working on that, of course, and hope to, I think, hope to have a good, some decision points and outdoor events center updates for you kind of towards the end of, of the year. Still finalizing the date, but I know you've got some emails about it and there's conversations, so I just wanted to share that little update and that's it.
Yeah. Comment on that. My understanding is that the youth athletic groups in the region are very excited about that event, that venue, and plan on using it at a high percentage.
Yeah, I mean, I think the various teams, and I know the Sports Commission has talked about the ability to recruit tournaments of, of youth athletics. Once you have, you know, the great fields at Phil Johnson, the Memorial Stadium at the school district, the current Funko Field, and then a future stadium, you get, you can leverage that to bring a lot of teams in the area. And yeah.
Thank you. How about our city attorney, David Hall?
No report and no executive session. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to our consent items. We have six consent items, items one through six. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent items.
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Okay, are there any quick questions? Okay, seeing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to our proposed action item. Item number six, Council Bill 2508-49. It's been read into the record. Does council have any questions or comments at this time? Okay, seeing none. A third and final reading will be October 8th, 2025. So we'll move on to our proposed action items. Council item number eight, Council Bill 2509-50. I'll read into the record, first reading, adopt a ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled Lift Station Number 24, Conveyance Improvements Fund 336, Program 050, third and final reading, 101525. Does council have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll have, of course, two more times and the final reading will be on the 15th of this month. Okay. Moving on to item number nine, Council Bill 2509-51. First reading, adopt a ordinance amending ordinance number 4010-24 entitled Walter E. Hall Park Community Connection Path, Fund 354, Program 094, to accumulate all costs for the project. Third and final reading, 101525. Does council have any questions or comments on item number nine? Okay, hearing none. Once again, final reading is 101525. Item number 10, Council Bill 2509-52. First reading, adopt a ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled RFB Pedestrian Safety Fund 303, Program 134, to accumulate all costs for the improvement. Third and final reading will be October 15th, 2025. Does council have any comments or questions? Councilmember Zarlingo.
Just for that abbreviation, for those who are not insiders, it's rectangular something rather flashing beacon?
Rapid rectangular flashing beacons.
Thank you. And I think the purpose of that is they are much more alerting to drivers, brighter, more focused to help pedestrian safety. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions, comments? Okay. Moving on to our action item, item number 12, or 11, excuse me. Authorize the mayor to sign amendment number three to the PSA with OTAC for Water Main Replacement Y Phase Two in the amount of $51,958. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Okay, any questions or comments from council? Okay, motion and seconds been made. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, item number 12. Action item number 12, authorize the mayor to sign a professional service agreement for engineering services for Everett Transit's Everett Station Cabinet Charger Installation in the amount of $131,766. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Okay, motion and seconds been made. Any questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, we'll move, we'll move to item 13, our public hearing and briefing on the 2026 Budget Revenue Presentation. So at this point, I will open the public hearing and introduce Jennifer Gregerson.
I'm thrilled to be here with Finance Director Heidi Brillantis and Assistant Director Jamie Lee Graves to provide you your revenue workshop as required by state law.
All right. Good evening, council. And as Jennifer said, today we'll be going through the 2026 Preliminary Budget Revenue Forecast Update. We'll start with an overview of the citywide revenue forecast and then go into further detail with the general government. The 26 citywide revenue forecast is projected at $576.5 million. The bar chart on this slide illustrates the breakdown of revenue by type. That's further segmented into general government and non-general government. General government sources are shown in dark blue while non-general government sources are represented in light blue. Out of the total, approximately $176.7 million comes from general government sources while the remaining $399.8 million is from non-general government sources. As a reminder, the general government helps pay for core city services such as police, fire, parks, and the library, to name a few. Taxes are the primary revenue source of the general government. On the other hand, we have non-general government funds such as our water and sewer utility, Everett Transit and golf courses. And these are primarily funded through rates, fees, grants, restricted tax revenues, or a combination of those. These funds operate like independent businesses and we want to continue to help our residents understand that when we talk about the general government and how to address our budget deficit, we can't legally utilize any general government or non-general government funds such as transit, golf, and the utilities, the private businesses, if you will, to help pay for general fund services, which is not earned. The 2026 General Government Revenue Forecast is $177 million. This visual shows the proportionate share of all general government revenues with individual taxes broken out to the bar on the right. As you can see, there are a variety of revenues that support the city's core public services. However, taxes are by far our largest source. That accounts for 75% of total resources. Within our tax category, the biggest contributors are property tax, sales tax, business and occupation, or BNO tax, utility taxes. And those are ones that are paid through telephone, cable, and garbage, as well as other taxes. Each year, we conduct the General Government Revenue Forecast process starting in July. And this gives us the advantage of having six months of real-time data to guide our projections. We take a detailed approach examining each revenue source individually. Our reforecasting process integrates both national economic trends and Everett-specific factors. We rely on a variety of sources, whether that be our own research webinars and economic newsletters to stay informed. Key national factors include inflation, Federal Reserve policies, the real estate market, and consumer debt. On the local front, we also look closely at developments in Everett, whether that be business activity and population changes, all of which provide a more accurate picture of our economy's current state and future outlook. The main revenue categories for the general government are property tax, sales tax, BNO tax, utility taxes, and miscellaneous revenues. The reference to general government utility taxes is different than the Water and Sewer Utilities Enterprise Fund. Examples of that, like I said, include natural gas, electricity, telephone, cable, and garbage. Combined, these categories account for 82% of our total resources. And now Jamie Lee will walk you through each of these in further detail.
So beginning with property taxes. By law, all real and personal property is subject to taxation unless explicitly exempt. The city of Everett, like other taxing district, is allowed to collect a set dollar amount each year known as the levy. This levy helps fund the city's operating expenses, which cover the cost of providing essential services to the community. Property tax is the city's most stable and least volatile revenue source, largely unaffected by economic fluctuations. State law limits levy increases to 1% annually unless voters approve a higher rate. In 2026, property tax is expected to contribute nearly $42.5 million or 24% of the total general government revenue. This amount includes the 1% allowable growth, which is an increase of $418,453, along with a one-time increase of $263,706 from the assessed value of new construction added to the tax roll. Our second-largest source of general government revenue is sales tax. Business in Washington collects sales tax from customers typically on the sale of tangible goods, though some services are also taxable. There are certain exemptions set by state law. Sales tax consists of both state and local portions. The current rate is 9.9%. However, it is important to remember that most of the 9.9% sales tax revenue is not retained by the city of Everett. 6.5% goes to the state and 3.4% is allocated to local entities, including the city, county, regional transit authority, and public transportation benefit area. The local share, the city receives 0.85%. In 2026, sales tax is projected to generate approximately $40.5 million, accounting for 23% of total general government revenues. This reflects a 1.7% increase over the 2025 revised forecast. Taxable sales within the city are primarily driven by the retail and construction sectors. While we anticipate a slight decline in construction activity driven by ongoing market uncertainties such as shifts in trade policy, fluctuating interest rates, and the continued impact of tariffs, this is expected to be offset by growth in the retail sector. Retail sales are forecasted to increase modestly with a steady 2% gain, particularly in categories such as motor vehicles, sporting goods, and general merchandise. For context, taxable retail sales across Washington State grew 3.1% year-over-year in Q4 2024, indicating that Everett's projections are generally in line with statewide trends, though we've adopted a more conservative outlook to reflect local economic conditions. The Washington State Legislature recently passed a bill that added new business activities to the definition of retail sales. Changes to the forecast resulting from this new legislation are not incorporated in the budget due to timing of when this was passed. However, we'll continue to monitor the extension of the tax base to certain services, which actually was implemented today. Our third-largest source of general government revenue is miscellaneous revenues, representing $24.2 million or 14% of total general government revenues in 2026. This represents a 31.4% increase over the 2025 revised budget. The increase is primarily due to operating transfers into the general government, several of which are tied directly to labor support and service delivery. First, we have a transfer from the Criminal Justice Fund 156 to support the violent crime unit within the police department. Second, we are utilizing lodging tax revenues to support staffing for city-led events and to fund the Everett Performing Arts Center Management Contract. Third, we are continuing to use the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, or SAMZ, a grant to fund our Alternative Crisis Response Program. The remaining $1 million of the original $4.5 million grant will support this critical initiative in 2026. Finally, we are transferring $4.85 million in local COVID relief program funds to the general government. As discussed during the September 17th budget balancing presentation, this includes $2.3 million in unallocated, unspent funds and $2.55 million in previously allocated but unspent funds. The fourth-largest source of general government revenue is BNO tax, which is a gross receipts tax assessed on the value of products, gross proceeds of sale, or gross income of a business. BNO tax represents $22.3 million or 13% of total general government revenues in 2026. Similar to sales tax, the forecast considered continued activity in construction and manufacturing along with world airline market conditions. We also considered the impact of the BNO tax ordinance amendments adopted in 2022 that raised the threshold for gross receipts eligible for the tax rate reduction from $8 billion to $8.5 billion in 2026. Lastly, our fifth-largest revenue source is utility taxes, which are applied to the gross revenues of local utilities like natural gas, telephone, electric, garbage, and cable services in place of the BNO tax. In 2026, utility taxes are projected at $15 million or 8% of total general government revenues, reflecting a 2.4% increase over the 2025 revised forecasts. In developing our forecast, we considered factors like the Consumer Price Index and its impact on utility rate increases, population growth, and shifts in consumer behavior such as the ongoing move from cable services to streaming platforms. Electricity utility tax revenue is expected Electricity utility tax revenue is expected to grow about two point five percent with natural gas growing at five percent compared to the two thousand twenty five revised budget. The last graph highlights the key, the city's key general government revenue sources over time from two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty six. At the very top in dark blue, you'll notice the stability and predictability of property tax revenues shown in the steady upward sloping line. That consistency reflects the one percent annual increase allowed under state law, along with the addition of new construction to the tax base. In contrast, the rest of the chart paints a different picture. It shows how other revenue sources are more closely tied to broader economic cycles, rising in strong years and falling during downturns. Over the past fifteen years, sales tax collections in Everett have mirrored these economic shifts. After a significant drop during the Great Recession, sales tax revenue rebounded steadily through two thousand nineteen, fueled in large part by robust construction activity. Then in two thousand twenty, we witnessed an economic slowdown due to the pandemic. Sales tax revenues ended the year significantly below two thousand nineteen levels, about one point six million. Thankfully, we saw a strong recovery in two thousand twenty one with receipts climbing three point four million dollars above the previous peak, supported in part by federal stimulus and a rebound in consumer activity. That trend continued in two thousand twenty two, driven by high inflation and record levels of construction. In two thousand twenty four, sales tax revenues declined slightly compared to two thousand twenty three as retail and construction activity weakened, though remaining higher than pre-pandemic levels, with manufacturing performance helping to offset the decline. Although we have a diversity of businesses in Everett, the B and O tax base remains heavily concentrated in aerospace. We've yet to return to the revenue level seen in two thousand fifteen through two thousand seventeen. In two thousand twenty four, a decline in revenues was primarily due to the labor strike in the aerospace industry, which impacted both the aerospace and manufacturing sectors. However, after the resolution of the labor dispute, revenues in two thousand twenty five are returning to two thousand twenty three levels, with projections for two thousand twenty six remaining relatively flat. Utility tax revenues can be unpredictable, influenced by factors like mild weather, increased conservation efforts, and shifts in consumer behavior. As for miscellaneous revenues, they largely reflect one-time inflows such as operating transfers. The spike we saw in two thousand twenty three was driven by the eighteen million dollar transfer from ARPA. While these one-time revenues can provide a temporary boost, consistent revenue streams offer much greater predictability and stability.
And as we look ahead to the next year, it's important to recognize the inherent risks and uncertainties that come with forecasting. While we are optimistic, we also must remain vigilant. There are several factors that could prompt us to adjust course if we experience a dip in revenues next year. Forecasting is always subject to uncertainty, and at this stage, we consider both potential upside, where revenues could outperform our expectations, and downside risk where we might fall short. That said, it's worth noting that the city of Everett's revenue forecasts have historically been within the two and a half percent of actual performance, reflecting a strong track record of accuracy. As I mentioned earlier, the city's ability to fund essential services is deeply tied to four main revenue sources, which Jamie Lee had gone over tonight. Together, these taxes account for seventy five percent of the general government's revenue. These revenue streams, while stable, are closely tied to broader economic trends, which can fluctuate based on a number of factors. If inflation remains high, it could dampen both consumer and business confidence, leading to reduced spending and investment. On the flip side, if inflation starts to decline, we could see relief in the form of stronger, stronger consumer purchasing power, which would boost consumer confidence and in turn change our and improve our spending patterns. Another major factor to consider is housing. According to the Washington State Department of Commerce, roughly one million new housing units will need to be built in the state by two thousand forty four to meet the demand. This need, combined with affordability challenges, is something we'll need to keep an eye on as it affects everything from property values to consumer spending behavior. In addition to housing, there's also the broader issue of purchasing power. Consumer spending is an important factor for the city's budget and something we continue to monitor closely. All these factors are interconnected, and their combined effect will influence the revenue streams we depend on to fund essential services. As we continue to forecast, we'll need to balance these risks and opportunities, staying nimble and ready to adjust if circumstances change. By keeping a close watch on these trends, we can work to ensure that the city remains on stable financial footing, even in the face of economic uncertainty. So this concludes our two thousand twenty six revenue forecast update. We'll be providing more detailed insights into both citywide and general government revenues during the two thousand twenty six preliminary budget hearings, which start on November fifth.
Actually, we should go to public, public questions. Is there anyone here to speak?
I haven't received any.
Anything new? Okay, so we'll go now to council comments and questions. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. I'm also thrilled to be here. Thank you. So I have a couple of questions under sales tax. It does feel very, the projections do feel really optimistic to me. Maybe I've been more of a glass half, half-empty kind of person lately, but I'm seeing a lot of concerns about people, individuals purchasing power next year because of social safety nets being removed, AI potentially decimating the job market, you know, lots of different factors. So I was hoping you could share more about some of the projections that you've been hearing in analysis and basically help me be more of a glass half-full person again.
Sure, yes. So if you think about the sales tax growth, it's really at one point seven four, if you're looking at it more accurately, difference or increase from the prior year. And we consider that to be relatively flat and still conservative, knowing that we have seen sales tax go beyond even the three percent. And generally, three percent is like our tipping point, but we also have to think about our business tax base. So not just looking at sales tax, but how it relates, how does our business and occupation tax and the industries within that affect our ability to also obtain revenue from our sales tax? It is true, though, when it comes to our taxable retail sales, they are now relatively flat. So in two thousand nineteen, as an example, we went from three point two billion, and we saw a decline in two thousand twenty to three billion dollars. And actually, in twenty one, it had rebounded even greater than what we experienced pre-pandemic. Twenty twenty three is when really that rise, that was really the main increase, and now you're kind of seeing a slower and steady decline from our kind of peak years. Also to consider, you know, with Jamie Lee explaining the sales tax base changes that are effective October first. With that, we won't actually be able to track actual performance until December because of the two-year, the two-month lag.
Yeah, that was my next question. I was curious if the state or commerce has been able to provide any projections that we could incorporate into planning for next year's budget, or if it's going to be part of a budget offset for planning for two thousand twenty seven?
Yes, it most certainly will be used in two thousand twenty seven or as budgets are amended mid-year. That could also be considered. We are, finance is continually monitoring for new updates. You would think that all of the information would be available prior to the date of implementation. However, the last I checked, which was not too long ago, the only item that was fully discussed was how it would affect the current contracts that would fall under those new tax categories. But they actually have a grace period to report under their new tax base effective March thirty first of two thousand twenty six. But other than that, trust me, finance is still, because we also have our reporting requirements to DOR, so we want to make sure that any new changes as they come are integrated into our processes.
Great. One last question for the miscellaneous revenues for the allocation of COVID relief program to support general government operations. That four point eight, is that going to be zeroing out our remaining balance, or there'll still be some left?
Yes, within the Clean Everett Program, there's amounts reserved there in twenty six and twenty seven to continue that program for those two years. Also, in the first budget amendment is when we look at the prior year's spend down and we reappropriate everything that has been, that remains and get that integrated into the, into the budget. But at this time, the budget assumes that all will be spent down by the end of the year, and we know that that's not likely to happen, but also don't want to estimate what that could be for next year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Tui.
Well, thank you. You answered my questions in that. So it's a great presentation. I had questions on the sales tax and you covered it all. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One about the property tax. Do you know what the levy rate is currently?
Yes, the levy rate is estimated to be a dollar forty six or a dollar forty seven if I rounded correctly.
And that doesn't, doesn't include EMS, correct?
No, it does not.
Is there any other within the Everett jurisdiction that's tied to the levy rate rather than those two things? Beyond the levy rate?
To our property tax revenue. So our levy rate is, no, it's just.
Specifically for Everett jurisdiction, we have our EMS.
Regular property tax and emergency medical services.
Okay, thank you. And then under sales tax, and I've been saying this for a while, we, a lot of the the increase in two thousand twenty is the, based on our internet retail sales. That, we'd talked about that before. I just kind of wanted to bring that up that, you know, that's kind of a one-time bump because of the change in shopping habits.
I think you would see a lot more retail, online retail sales in two thousand twenty. The rebound that we saw was in two thousand twenty one due to the stimulus checks as well as consumer behavior.
Okay, so it seemed to kind of a new plateau is my point. We're not expecting anything in the future to have a significant impact on that. So it's either going to be flat or flatter.
Yeah, and that's really with the market uncertainties right now, and you really see that in the consumer behavior as people are not more inclined to spend if there's a lot of uncertainty out there in the economy. And that's also possibly with business investments as well.
And then under miscellaneous revenue, majority of that revenue, other than the COVID relief program, is dedicated allocated dollars, right? Basically. I mean, there's not a lot of flexibility when we get, besides the COVID dollars.
Yeah, miscellaneous revenues are generally considered those one-time revenues.
Yeah, thank you. And then under utility taxes, what's our largest consumption as far as revenue? Is it cable? Is it power? Is it water and sewer tax?
Electricity.
Electricity, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So without present, we've had the presentation, we have had public comment and council comment. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Second the motion.
Motion sec has been made. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes, and with no further business, we are now.